Let's do the pledges of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and trusted Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and individual. Alright, we're now going to consider the items on the consent agenda, approving the minutes, and then there are one, two, three, seven cases. So do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent items with one correction on the case file number 2024. That next to the last line there, supposed to be half amount, and they made half amount, one word.
Alright.
Make that a little correction.
Alright.
I'm good for it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on now, we are in the public hearing portion of the agenda. First matter is case file number 2025-05. It says AZ over the public hearing, consider approval of request of LCA on behalf of Hector County as owner for original zoning request of light industrial upon annexation into city limits for vacant land being 4.897 acres. Property located in section forty-six, block forty-two, township one, South Texas Pacific Railway Company Survey. Generally located intersection of East Yukon Road and North Hector Avenue. Yes ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission members. The applicant, LCA consultant, Hector County, and Hector County, Texas owner, is requesting an original zoning of light industrial upon annexation into the city limits to facilitate the development of a youth detention center. The annexation is in process with the city. And like I mentioned, the proposed development is a youth center, detention center that will be located on this 4.897 acres. All the requested documents have been submitted, and staff recommends approval of the original zoning of light industrial for a prison jail youth detention center facility, subject to the conditions A and B, which are approval of the SUP and the landscape shall conform to the regulations set forth in Article 10 of the City of Odessa ordinances. I'm here for any questions.
Okay, anyone have questions, staff? If there are no questions, staff, then I would note that this is a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience this afternoon that wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition to this matter, now would be the time to come forward. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public discussion, internal commission, or any other discussion, or a motion.
So move.
Have a motion for approval. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion, second by Garrett?
I second.
Because she didn't see that. Motion passes. Number ten on the agenda. This is one we're missing the number.
That's the answer.
Yes, this is the extra sheet.
It's the extra sheet.
Right, alright. It's open to public hearing to consider approval of other requests by Maverick Engineering for a zone change from future development to light industrial on a 3.0 acre tract of land located in section twenty-five, block forty-two, T2S, 10P Railway Company Survey. Property generally located on the south side of East Pearl Street and approximately sixteen, sixty-five feet west of Reed Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission members. There were five notices sent, zero protests, zero approvals, and zero returns. The applicant is Maverick Engineering. They're requesting a zone change from future development to light industrial zoning district for a three, on a three acre tract located in the section twenty-five, block forty-two, T2S, 10P Railway Company Survey, City of Odessa, Hector County, Texas. Analysis of their request is that the property is located on the south side of East Pearl Street, approximately at 1,665 feet west of Reed Avenue, and it's currently originally zoned, future development, originally designated, future development. It contains two buildings. Its surrounding land uses include industrial development to the north, east, and west, with vacant land to the south. They are requesting a zone change to light industrial to allow for future development of workforce housing. This application pertains only to the zoning change, so this request is only for zoning at this time. It is important to note that the workforce housing is not by right use in light industrial district and is permitted only with approved specific use permit as required by the City of Odessa zoning ordinance. A separate SUP application will be submitted following this zoning request to seek approval for the proposed workforce housing use. This request has been evaluated in the context of the City of Odessa's comprehensive plan using key planning priorities as follows for comprehensiveness. The proposed zoning change is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The property is situated near other areas also zoned light industrial. The intended use aligns with the existing unplanned industrial and residential land uses in the vicinity. For livability, the proposed light industrial zoning is not anticipated to have a negative impact on the site or surrounding properties. Workforce housing as a transitional land use is compatible with the area's current development patterns. For reasonableness, the zone change represents a logical and reasonable transition between similar intensity land uses, and it will not disrupt the character of the area and is compatible with adjacent zoning and land use patterns. Based on the analysis above, staff recommends approval of the zone change request subject to the following conditions. A, the property should comply with applicable light industrial standards, regulations as outlined in the City of Odessa zoning ordinance. And B, workforce housing shall not be permitted on this site without the approval of the specific use permit as requested under section fourteen dash two dash seven G of the zoning ordinance. I'm here for any questions.
Okay, anyone have questions? Okay, if there are no questions, staff, then I would again note this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here today that wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition to this matter? Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public portion. Is there a motion, and second?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Going on to case file number 2025-22Z. This involves a public hearing to consider approval of the request by Rampart Texas LLC owners, Watermill Express, as applicant to amend the site plan for planned development retail zoning district located on lot seven, block twenty-seven, North Central Club Estates, fifth filing. Property located northeast of intersection of Loop 338 and East Ridge Road. Yes ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. The property involved in this request is located on northeast corner of the intersection of East Ridge Road and Loop 338. The site is currently designated planned development retail and is currently occupied by retail office strip center. Land use in the area consists of retail office development and apartments to the north, residential development to the south and east, and recreational open space, that is UTPB, to the west. The applicant, Rampart Texas LLC owner, seeking to amend the existing site plan for the planned development retail in order to allow watermill structure to be located on the north elevation of the existing parking lot. The city council approved the planned development retail in August nineteen ninety-eight with a condition set specific development standards and retail office uses be allowed on the property. The applicant is requesting an amendment to the site plan of the existing planned development retail to include as follows. A, allow a watermill structure to be located within the property. The other conditions of the planned development will not be affected by the proposed amendment. Planning staff analysis of the amendment request is that a watermill structure will meet the land use criteria of the City of Odessa for retail and service uses to be located on the intersection of a major highway and Collector Street. Staff is the opinion of the watermill structure is a compatible use for this location and has no objection to the request as presented. Based on the preceding analysis, staff recommends approval of the request subject to conditions A through D.
Okay, there were no protests?
There were.
The last time we had this property, there was, it was a donut shop.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one had a lot. There were twenty-three notices sent, zero denials, there were two approvals, and one return mail.
Very good. Alright, thank you. Any other questions, staff? I'll close the public portion, turn to staff. Have any discussion or a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
A motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.
Notice who's on council in nineteen ninety-eight. What's your old porch?
They are new.
Oh, sorry, that probably wasn't nice.
Alright. That brings us to number twelve, case file number 2025-04SUP. This is a public hearing to consider request by LCA applicant for a specific use permit to allow a youth detention center to be located on a 4.897 acre tract of land in section forty-six, block forty-two, township one, south, Texas Pacific Railway Company Survey. Yes ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Commission and members. There were four notices sent, one approval, zero protests, and zero returns. Staff analysis of this request, excuse me. Is that Hector County is proposing the phase development of secure youth detention center purpose built to provide a safe, structured, and rehabilitative environment for juveniles under court jurisdiction. The facility is designed to meet the diverse needs of youth while emphasizing public safety, rehabilitation, and community reintegration. The proposed center will feature individual sleeping rooms furnished with basic amenities and direct access to bathrooms. Dayrooms will serve as supervised common areas for social interaction and recreational activities. The facility will also house onsite educational classrooms, counseling and therapy rooms, and multipurpose spaces for vocational training, life skills development, and structured group programs. Additional features include indoor/outdoor recreation areas, multiple dining areas, medical clinic, and laundry services, ensuring that all daily needs are met within a secure setting. Administrative offices and staff support will ensure, areas will ensure proper oversight and operational agencies, efficiencies, I'm sorry. To minimize offsite transportation and enhance overall safety, the design also incorporates a secure onsite courtroom to accommodate certain juvenile hearings. The facility is planned for construction in four phases with a total estimated area of sixty-two thousand four hundred thirty-six square feet. The site plan includes two main entrances along East Yukon Road, each monitored by a secured kiosk. A total of fifty-five vehicle parking spaces are proposed to accommodate staff, visitors, and service providers. An existing twenty-five foot easement will provide continued access to the adjacent detention center, promoting operational continuity. The project, excuse me, the site will be enclosed by six feet chain link fence and buffered by perimeter landscaping, including trees, to provide visual screening and a softened interface with adjacent properties. The planning department finds that the proposed youth detention center is an appropriate and compatible use for the site. The project is thoughtfully designed to meet the needs of Hector County juvenile population while maintaining a secure and respectful presence with the surrounding areas. Staff believes that any potential adverse impacts to the adjacent properties can be mitigated through proper site design, operational controls, and adherence to the following conditions, which are listed on the screen. That is, one separation requirement. Minimum separation of four hundred and twenty feet must be maintained between the jail detention facility and any single-family dwelling. Two-family dwelling, three-family, and four-family dwelling, multifamily dwelling, or residence home for the elderly. Two, that the detailed site plan submission. More detailed site plans should be provided clearly illustrating all walkways, pedestrian access points, including a comprehensive legend classifying land uses and functional areas. Sign compliance, that all sign associated with the facility must comply with the parking zone and signage regulations outlined in the Odessa zoning ordinance, chapter fourteen, article fourteen dash four, sign regulations, and any relevant parking ordinances under chapter fourteen, article fourteen dash three, off-street parking and loading. The light, number four is light industrial district compliance. They shall comply with all applicable standards and regulations for light industrial zoning, including land use, building setbacks, landscaping, and operational standards. Fire and building codes, full compliance with all applicable Odessa fire department regulations and building inspection codes. Site plan adoption, formal adoption of the submitted site plan by the city council is required, and the project must adhere strictly to the approved plan. Permit review and revocation. This permit will be subject to the review received of neighborhood complaints. This is temporary, this is a temporary permit, and the city council reserves the right to revoke permit for violations of its terms or if facility demonstrates a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood. Following a public hearing in accordance with Odessa zoning ordinance, chapter fourteen, article fourteen dash two, section fourteen dash two thirteen, permit revocation and enforcement. I'm here for any questions.
Are there any questions, staff?
I didn't get all of that.
I would note that the existing facility is about fifty years old.
Yes.
I was probation, juvenile probation officer, Wichita County. And at one time when this was built, it was kind of the prototype, the example for other youth centers, but that's fifty years ago. Time for something new.
And it's right next door, right?
Yes.
Right, right next door. Any other question, staff? This is still part of the public portion of our meeting today. Is there anyone in the audience today that wishes to speak in favor of or in opposition to this matter? Seeing no one come forward, let's close the public portion, turn to the commission. Anybody got a motion or?
So move.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion, two seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Okay, now under subpart five of the agenda miscellaneous, first matter under that category. Number thirteen is case file number 2025-94P. This involves a preliminary plat of Clyde A. Pool's second filing being a replat of the south fifteen point three feet of lot nine out of lot ten, saving except the east twenty feet of said tracts, block one, Clyde A. Pool's two acre tracts. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're gonna give Maria a bit of a break. So, the owner, Goldr Self Storage LLC, and consultant, S.W. Howell, Inc., are seeking approval of a plat for development purposes. Staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plat of Clyde A. Pool's two acre tracts, subject to the conditions A through C, which are a blanket refuse collection easement will be required. Any work in the right of way or easements will require a permit from the engineering division and must comply with current city ordinances. And approval of the plat is subject to all plat comments, conditions, and requirements being satisfied by all pertinent city departments before filing for recordation. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Are there any questions? If there are no questions, any discussion or a motion?
So move.
I'll second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Going on to case file number 2025-97P. This involves a replat of Armor of Christ Edition being three point three five two acres of land out of the Armor of Christ Edition, City of Odessa, Hector County. Property generally located northwest corner of the intersection of Newell Road and Brown Avenue. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The owner, TH and EH Holdings LLC, and consultant, Piper Surveying, are seeking approval of a plat for development purposes. Staff does recommend approval of the plat, subject to the following conditions. That ownership and tax certificates need to be submitted prior to filing the plat. That the plat is located in a multifamily two zoning district. Minimum lot width is fifty feet, minimum lot size is five thousand square feet for single-family detached lots. And then we have given a few different options for how to remedy that. Next is that they need to remove the names under city signature blocks. Then the title of the plat should be updated to the next filing of the Armor of Christ Edition. For example, Armor of Christ Edition so-and-so filing. Drainage report needs to be submitted. The tract is not in a special flood hazard area. Water sewer, paving, and drainage plans need to be submitted for review and acceptance. An improvements agreement will be required. Any works in, or any work in the right of way or easements will require a permit from the engineering division and must comply with current city ordinances and policies. And finally, approval of the plat is subject to all plat comments, conditions, and requirements being satisfied by all pertinent city departments before filing for recordation. And I'm here if you have any questions.
You might have got questions?
Move for approval.
Okay, I've got a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Moving on now, we're at case file number 2025-101P. This involves the preliminary plat of law enforcement center second filing being a replat of lot one, block one. Law enforcement center generally located on the east side of South Crane Avenue and hundred and fifty feet south of South Interstate Highway twenty, Frontage Road. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The owner, Hector County, and consultant, LCA, are seeking approval of a plat for a cemetery. Staff does recommend approval of the replat of the law enforcement center second filing, subject to the conditions A through C. That being, the replat should be filed prior to filing Hector County Cemetery South. That's an upcoming plat you'll see in a couple cases. Access requirements from Tech Dot must be met for access to the Interstate twenty, Frontage, and Crane Avenue Connector Road. And that approval of the plat is subject to all plat comments, conditions, and requirements being satisfied by all pertinent city departments. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Any questions? No, we're in trouble.
It's not a public hearing. Alright, great.
Okay, if there are no questions, staff, then I'd stand for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I second.
A motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Can we just vote it on 101?
Uh-huh.
So, they, sorry, back there that were talking, they already received the drainage and all the improvements, so it allows them to move forward as a replat.
Do we need to take it back, then?
Do we rescind?
Do you have a motion? It's gonna cost you.
So, it's not in a flood zone, is that what you said?
No, no, no. I don't know. Your law can talk. So, usually replats are not allowed if they have drainage or in, or public improvements that need to be addressed.
Oh, I see, okay.
But they have that addressed. And so that's why it qualifies now to move as a replat. If it proceeds as a preliminary, then it has to come back for a final. This way with the replat, this is the last time you'll see it.
And they can move on?
Yes.
So do we?
Motion to reconsider.
I'll make a motion to reconsider.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So now we're gonna reconsider case file number 2025-101P as a replat. Is that right? Instead of a preliminary plat? Staff wants us to consider this to be a replat of lot one, block one. Anybody have any questions?
Should we strike through some of the recommendations that are already? Is that part of that? Is that one of them? The conditions, is A?
No, that, that should still remain.
Yeah, yeah.
That's her name.
Yeah, all the conditions should still stay.
Okay.
So as far as approving this case file as a replat, do I have a motion for approval?
So move, second.
I have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. May we now proceed with case file number 2025-104P? This is a preliminary plat of workforce housing, being three acres of land located in section twenty-five, block twenty-two, T2S, 10P Railway Company Survey. Property generally located on the south side of East Pearl Street and west of Reed. Sounds familiar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the owner, Amit Garg, and consultant, Maverick Engineering, are seeking approval of a plat with one lot for development purposes. Staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plat, subject to the conditions A through C. That the E-Cod block needs to be removed, that the ETJ review block needs to be removed, and approval of the plat is subject to all plat comments, conditions, and requirements being satisfied by all city departments. With that, I'm here for any questions.
Alright, Jim, I throw him a curveball. He may got a difficult question.
I was thinking on workforce housing, is it like a five-year deal, or is it a permanent deal?
So, with workforce housing, they're gonna be required to get an SUP. That's gonna come to you at a later date.
Okay.
They have not requested that yet. But they will do that. It will also be, there'd be a site plan approval involved with that, so they'll have to go through all of that.
Okay, alright, I'm, I'm gonna step ahead. Alright.
Any other questions, staff? No questions, do we have further discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I note that we're now at halftime. We're halfway through. Thirty items on the agenda. Do we get intermission or popcorn?
Do we get snacks?
Alright, everybody ready to go on? Alright, let's go. Case file number 2025-109P. This involves the preliminary plat of Hector County Cemetery South, being nineteen point four nine seven acres out of lot three, block one, law enforcement center second filing. Any tricks on this one?
No, Mr. Chair. The owner, Hector County, and consultant, LCA, are seeking approval of a plat for a cemetery. Staff recommends approval of the plat. This'll be a replat as well for Hector County Cemetery South, subject to the conditions A through C, which is a replat of law enforcement center should be filed prior to filing this plat. This is the one that we saw just two cases ago. Access requirements from Tech Dot must be met for access to the Interstate twenty, Frontage, and Crane Avenue Connector Road. An approval of the plat is subject to all plat comments, conditions, and requirements being satisfied by all pertinent city departments.
So this is second cemetery?
It's the same one. So what they're doing is that first one was to separate it out, and the second one's to do a replat.
Alright.
Yeah.
Any other questions? You better got a motion.
Move for approval.
I'll second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Moving on to case file number 2025-93P. This property is in ETJ. It involves the preliminary plat of Carrasco subdivision first filing, being five point nine oh acres of land in section sixteen, block forty-two, T3S, 10P Railway Company Survey. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the applicant, S.W. Howell, and Luis Carrasco are seeking approval of a plat to create one lot for ownership purposes. Staff recommends approval of the plat of Carrasco subdivision, subject to conditions A through D. One, the tract is not in the E-Cod service area, block should be removed. B, contact Tech Dot for access availability. C, access to US 385 will be coordinated and permitted by Tech Dot. Developer should apply for a driveway with Tech Dot. Under current access management standards, the minimum spacing of access on this segment roadway is four hundred and twenty-five feet, so a need for evaluation on existing driveways to determine the most appropriate location will be required. And then approval of the plat is subject to all plat comments, conditions, and requirements being satisfied by all pertinent city departments. With that, I'm here for any questions.
Any questions? If there are no questions, then let's talk about it or have a motion.
So move.
Alright, no talk, motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Moving on to case file number 2025-98P, property again in the ETJ. Another preliminary plat. This is of Chaparral Estates, sixth filing, which is a replat of lots eight and nine, block sixteen, Chaparral Estates, sixth filing, and north eighteen feet of lot one, block thirteen, Chaparral Estates, fifth filing. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the owner, Jose A. Dominguez, and consultant, Maverick Engineering, are seeking approval of a plat for development purposes. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat of Chaparral Estates, sixth filing, subject to conditions A through G. A, that lot eight A should be changed to the next available number in block sixteen. B, current conditions should be removed from the face of the plat prior to filing. C, remainder of lot one, block thirteen looks to be under common ownership. If so, include remainder to create a new lot, rather than leaving a portion of the lot remaining. D, some sort of access easement between proposed lot eight A and remainder of lot one, block thirteen might be considered to maintain existing access to driveway. E, development note number three needs to be removed. F, use next available lot number for block sixteen. And G, approval of the plat is subject to all plat comments, conditions, and requirements being satisfied by all pertinent city departments. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Alright, any more questions? Alright, discussion or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve. Have a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. We're now at number twenty, case file number 2025-99P. Continuing in the ETJ with another preliminary plat. This involves Knox Village Ranchets Phase Three, being a replat of lot six and seven, lot five, Knox Ranch, Ranchets, Phase Two. Yes, sir?
Apologies about the presentation. It looks like there's some technical difficulties with some of the slides syncing over. So I don't think we have this case up on the screen. But, the owner, LoJack Holdings, and consultant, Maverick Engineering, are seeking approval of a plat for development purposes. Staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plat of Knox Village Ranchets, Phase Three, subject to conditions A through H. Current conditions should be removed from the face of the plat. Current conditions should be removed from the face of the plat prior to filing. Uh, easements for pipelines should be shown if existing or dedicated on the plat. Uh, if E-Cod water is available and intended to be used, add an E-Cod block, if not, add a note stating that the intended water source is groundwater. Uh, D, drainage report needs to be submitted. E, plat is in the ETJ, uh, correct the signature blocks. F, label lot as Lot 14, Block 5. G, uh, remove the block for the county judge. And H, approval of the plat is subject to all plat comments, conditions, and requirements being satisfied by all pertinent city departments, uh, before being filed for accreditation with the county clerk of Ector County, Texas. With that, I'm here for any questions.
All right, somebody give me a question. All right, no questions, uh, stand ready for a motion?
So, so move.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
I second.
Motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, case file number 2025-102P, this is, is in the ETJ, it involves a preliminary plat of Oquatio Park Fifth filing, being a replat of Lots 1 and 2, Block 33, Oquatio Park Fifth filing, generally located on the south side of West 16th and near North Redondo.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the owners, Aurora Monios Gutierrez and Juan Gutierrez Martinez, and consultant, Maverick Engineering, are seeking approval of a plat for development purposes. Uh, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat of Oquatio Park Fifth filing, subject to conditions A through E. The title needs to be the next filing in Oquatio Park, rather than listing it as the replat of Lots 1 and 2. Uh, lot should be the next four numbers in Block 33, rather than 2A through 2D. Uh, private street needs to be dedicated separately. Uh, E-Cod signature block must be added. An approval of the plat is subject to all plat comments, conditions, and requirements being satisfied by all city, uh, departments. With that, I'm here for any questions.
Any questions?
Those are one acre lots?
Uh, I believe they are showing is just over half an acre, yeah.
Half acre, so, at half an acre, do we need E-Cod water?
Anything under an acre requires E-Cod water.
Okay, and they have that available?
I believe it is available in the area, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We're now at case file number 2025-103P, still in the ETJ, and, uh, working with preliminary plat, this one is on Westmore Acres, second filing, being two point four five acres of land out of Lots 7 and 8, Block 4, Westmore Acres, uh, generally located south side of West 29th Street and twenty, 200 feet east of North Alturas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, so the owner, Manuel Dominguez, and consultant, Andrew Brito, are seeking approval of a plat for development purposes. Uh, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat with the following conditions. Uh, county requirements for access must be met for all lots, that an E-Cod signature block must be added, and approval of the plat is subject to all plat comments, conditions, and requirements being satisfied by all pertinent city departments before being filed. With that, I'm here for any questions.
Anybody got questions?
If sewer's not available, they'll be responsible for that.
Uh, yeah, so, in the ETJ, it's usually, uh, septic, E-Cod does not offer, uh, septic, or, sorry, doesn't offer sewer.
No questions. I move to approve.
Have a motion for approval, is there a second?
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Uh, number 23 on the agenda, involves case file number 2025-105P, continuing in the ETJ, this is a preliminary plat of Circle 7 Estates, Fifth filing, being a replat of Lots 5 and 6, Block 6, Circle 7 Estates. Uh, Section 2, property generally located on the east side of Western Drive and 450 feet south of East Poppy Drive. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this one's also not gonna be up on the screen, uh, due to some of the issues. Uh, however, uh, the owners, Lavorek and Sandra Williams, and consultant Piper Surveying, are seeking approval of the plat for development purposes. Uh, staff recommends approval of the plat, uh, with one condition, that the approval of the plat is subject to all plat comments, conditions, and requirements being satisfied by all city departments before being filed. With that, I'm here if you have any questions.
He'd like to make a comment.
I understand, it's not a public hearing.
This is not public. Find out what his issue is and then...
You got preliminary? It's not a flood zone, he's supposed to go straight to E-Cod. And then this is E-Cod. You know, we're already on the... It's two lots, replat into three lots, on the same driveway.
Okay, I, we discussed with engineering, um, Yvonne, and we just, he hasn't received that report. Because the drainage report is still required, it still has to go through preliminary process, um, as a preliminary, and then a final.
Unless the applicant wants to pull the item and they figure it out, and then we bring it up, but you're gonna be doing the same thing and...
But I'll pay two fees.
Oh, no, that's fine if that's...
But we submitted the drainage report on this and the Gardendale survey.
Um, that's in our department, and our engineer, they're here, and they don't have it. So those are the options that we can give you. If you wanna pull your item, or...
Tag it.
Okay, so he wants to pull, it has to be pulled.
Okay.
So we're gonna pull the item.
So there's no action items?
So, nothing that we, nothing that we can do, we don't tell you, we don't worry about it, it's pulled and we're gonna move on.
Okay.
While they figure it out.
Okay, we are now skipping case file number 2025-105P. Moving on to case file number 2025-106P, um... And this one is a motion involving preliminary plat of Eagle Subdivision, being five acres of land in Section 43, Block 43, T2S, 10P Railway Company Survey. Property's generally located on the north side of Interstate Highway 20, Frontage Road, and approximately 550 feet west of South Knox Avenue. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. I did have to make a correction, originally when we, uh, did the cover page or the agenda for this one, we had a caption that indicated it was, uh, let's see, that it was, uh, Ector County Youth Center at the subdivision, however, it is Eagle Subdivision, I just wanted to make that clear in that correction.
Okay, correction noted. Um, what else do we need to know about this?
Okay, so, the owner, Jose Mendoz, and consultant, SW Howell, are seeking approval of a plat for development purpose. This request has been routed to all respective departments for internal, internal review and comments. Uh, subject staff, subject, I'm sorry, staff recommends approval of the preliminary, preliminary plat of the Eagle Subdivision, subject to condition A, that the approval of this plat is subject to all plat comments, conditions, and requirements being satisfied by all pertinent city departments before filing for accreditation with the county clerk of Ector County, Texas. And I'm here for any questions.
Anybody got questions? Uh, if there's no questions, then I stand ready for a motion.
I move to approve.
Have a motion for approval, is there a second?
I second.
Have a motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Uh, matter passes, we're now at case file number 2025-107P, staying in the ETJ, another preliminary plat, this, now this one is of the youth...
Correct.
Uh, Ector County Youth Center, being four point eight nine seven acres of land, uh, Section 46, Block 42. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. The owner, Ector County, and consultant, LCA, are seeking approval of a plat for a youth detention facility. The request has been routed to all respective departments for internal review and comments. The staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat of Ector County Youth Center, subject to conditions A through G. A, that improvements agreement will be required. Uh, B, blanket refuse collection easement agreement will be required. Drainage port needs to be submitted, the tract is not in special flood hazard area. Uh, D is to extend the eight-inch water and six-inch sewer line to the east side of the property. E is to submit water and sewer plants for review and acceptance. F, to ensure compliance with Sections 14 dash 211 of the City of Odessa ordinance with required separation from residential uses. Uh, G is approval of this plat is subject to, uh, all plat comments, conditions, and requirements being satisfied by all pertinent city, pertinent city departments before filing for accreditation with the city, with the county clerk of Ector County, Texas. And I'm here for any questions.
Are there any questions?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Uh, not, I, I would say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Case file number 2025-110P, property in ETJ, uh, preliminary plat of Southwest Industrial Sites, being a replat of Lots 19 and 20, Block 5, Southwest Industrial Sites, Ector County, Texas. This property's generally located on the west side of West County Road and 250 feet north of West McCordy. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. The owners, Charlie D. Pryor and Johnny and Sandra Hernandez, and consultant Maverick Engineering, are seeking approval of a plat to create one lot for development purposes. This request has been routed to respective departments for internal review and comments. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat of Southeast Edition, subject to conditions A through D. A, Ector County Public Works signature block is needed. Uh, B, to remove development notes number two and three. C, use next available lot number for Block 5. And D, approval of this plat is subject to all plat comments, conditions, and requirements being satisfied by all pertinent city departments before filing for accreditation with the city, with the county clerk of Ector County, Texas. I'm here for any questions.
Any questions? If there's no questions, then, uh, again, stand ready for another motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hold stretch. Case file number 2025-111P, uh, preliminary plat of West Ridge Subdivision Fourth filing, which is a replat of the north five acres of Lot 1, Block 5, West Ridge Subdivision. Property's generally located on the southeast corner of the intersection of West 42nd and North Mall. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. The owners, Dyno Truck and Car Wash LLC, and consultant is Maverick Engineering, they're seeking approval of a plat to create two lots for development purposes. The request has been routed to all respective departments for internal review and comments. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat of the West Ridge Subdivision, Fourth filing, subject to conditions A through B. Development notes number two and three need to be removed from the plat. B, approval of this plat is subject to all plat comments, conditions, and requirements being satisfied by all pertinent city departments before filing for accreditation with the county clerk of Ector County, Texas. I'm here for any questions.
Any questions?
Move for approval.
I'll second.
Have a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion passes, we're now at case file number 2025-112P. Uh, this is another preliminary plat, this is a Ranch Acres Subdivision Seventh filing, which is a replat of the north 209.5 feet of Lot 7, Block 7, Ranch Acres Subdivision First filing. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. The owners, Joaquin Sigala and Martha Nieto, and consultant, SW Howell, are seeking approval of a plat to create one lot for development purposes. This request has been routed to all respective departments for internal review and comments. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat of Ranch Acres Subdivision, sorry, just a second, Ranch Acres Subdivision Seventh filing, subject to condition A, that the approval of this plat is subject to all plat comments, conditions, and requirements being satisfied by all pertinent city departments before filing for accreditation with the Ector County clerk, uh, county clerk of Ector County, Texas. I'm here for any questions.
Anybody got questions? If there's no questions, stand ready for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All right, one more preliminary plat, this is 2025-113.
Okay.
Yes. Replay.
Okay. So, we did receive, uh, before we start, we did receive the repl, the drainage report for that previous, uh, plat, we can go ahead and, uh, take it to the end when, bring it back on the, at the end of this, of the...
Which one now, the one we skipped?
Twenty-three. No, it's twenty-three.
But we have two more, so that's three more.
One, one, three.
It's one, three.
The one we pulled.
The one we pulled was...
Twenty-three.
105P.
Oh, okay, this one.
Okay, who's on first?
Okay, so for this, uh, for this plat...
113.
So, for this plat that she's about to present, it was coming in as a preliminary in, based on the agenda, but they have the drainage report and everything has been settled, so it qualifies to be a replat.
Okay.
So this one, instead of being a preliminary, will now be a replat.
Well, excuse me. We are now, case file number 2025-113P, property in ETJ, we are to consider the replat of Lot 3, Block 13, Gardendale Subdivision, being 1.79 acres of land in Section 1, Block 42, T1S, 10P Railway Company Survey, property is in Ector County, generally located, uh, south side of East Morning Glory Road and 600 feet east of North Gardendale. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. The owner, Granado Family Ventures, and consultant Piper Surveying Company, are seeking approval of a plat to create two lots for development purposes. The request has been routed to all respective departments for internal review and comments. Staff recommends approval of the replat, of the replat of Lot 3, Block 13, Gardendale Subdivision, subject to conditions A through C. Uh, that the signature block for Ector County Public Works is required, platting should be next in, next, the next filing of Gardendale Subdivision. Approval of this plat is subject to all plat comments, conditions, and requirements being satisfied by all pertinent city departments before filing for accreditation with the county clerk of Ector County, Texas. And I'm here for any questions.
I have words for anybody who has any questions. If there are no questions...
I make a motion to approve.
And, and you're approving this replat?
The replat.
To replat. I think in the actual packet, it does say replat, it's just in the...
Yes.
Uh huh. Uh, yes, motion to approve.
And second?
I second.
Have a motion second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Please say aye. Now, any opposed?
No.
Say none opposed. We're gonna move on now, number 30, which is a record, this case file number 25-100P, Gary, help me, I can't read, I'm tired. Okay, this is a replat of Laster Subdivision, Third filing, being a replat of Lots 13 through 23, Block 3, replat of Laster Subdivision First filing, and Lot 25, Block 3, replat of Laster, Laster Subdivision Second filing, and it is City of Odessa, Ector County, Texas. This property generally located on the west side of Edison Avenue and about 200 feet southwest Third Street. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner and members. The owner, H.C. Services, and consultant Maverick Engineering, are seeking approval of a plat for development purposes. This, the request has been routed to all respective departments for internal review and comments. Uh, staff re... Uh, staff recommends approval of the replat of Lassiter subdivision, third filing, subject to conditions A through, actually, A through G.
G.
Yes. So A is platted, building setback lines are recommended to be applied to all frontages or be removed. Lot is located within the city limits. E-Cod block needs to be removed. Development note three should be removed. A blanket refuse collection easement agreement will be required for lot twenty-seven. This is a currently developed property with multiple driveways onto, uh, Business Twenty. If there is a significant change in use or traffic to from the site access, should be reevaluated, reevaluated to potentially consolidate access points. City of Odessa permitting authority for access to, uh, Business I twenty. Approval, approval of this plat is subject to all plat comments, conditions, and requirements being satisfied by all pertinent city departments before filing for a recordation with the county clerk of Ector County, Texas. I'm here for any questions.
Anybody got questions?
I have a question.
Alright.
What's that little property that's left over there? Is that an easement?
To the...
Yeah, it's like, something's there. There's a little s- structure there, but I can't tell who owns that. Just right there in the drawing. It's like, I guess that's east of it.
Fourth row.
Looks like it's lot thirteen.
Yeah.
That is a separate owner.
Okay.
That, yes, that portion has a separate owner.
Okay.
Not sure as to who that is, though.
I was just wondering who owned that. But, okay.
I think it's no further questions.
No further questions. Alright, we'll just wait. Any other questions?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Alright.
Thank you.
Drink's on me, it's very hot.